Everyone, I think we're ready to go. We're ready to start.
Yep.
I'm pleased to welcome committee members. And we also have two new student members to our esteemed committee. Joseph Adrajji, the new student trustee, who just walked in, just saying welcome. Like, right on cue. Great timing. And student member Lucas Amonte.
Amonte.
Welcome. And guests to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, iPad, laptop, iPhone, to access the agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are 10 copies of the agenda and supporting documents on the table if you prefer. Anybody prefer? Okay, we're good. There are two action items and one information item before the committee. Our first action item is approval of meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of the September 8, 2014 meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Our second action item is approval of the proposed amendments to the bylaws of the Board of Trustees to Article 15. Senior Vice Chancellor Frederick Schaefer and Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now provide an overview of the proposed amendment to Article 15. Gentlemen?
Yeah. Well, this is the, with one small exception, this is the same item that was before us at our last meeting as an informational item when we gave notice to, of the intent to amend the bylaws of the Board of Trustees. As you know, our procedure is to give notice at one meeting and then to bring it forward at the next board meeting for action. And so you'll all recall, there was extensive discussion about this at the last meeting. These are changes largely, but not entirely, as a result of changes in federal law and guidance concerning sexual assault cases. And the principal change in the student disciplinary procedures in Article 15, as a result of those changes in federal law and guidance, was to include the complainant as a much more involved and active participant in any disciplinary proceeding. And we went over those changes at, I think, some detail in the rationale for them at the last meeting. So I'm not going to go over it again. There may be some questions about it. I would like to point out one small change from the draft that you saw. And I didn't redline it because it was just the one thing, and it is, I think, completely uncontroversial. And that is in Section 15.4, under, and this would be one, two, not numbered pages, but one, two, three, fourth page, where, subparaphrase F, this is the notice that a respondent receives when they have been disciplinary charges. The notice contains, under F24, the right to be represented by an advisor or legal counsel at their expense. And then the following sentence was added because it was such an obvious and good idea, and we should have had it in there from the beginning, which is the following language: "If the respondent or the complainant requests it, the college shall assist in finding a legal counsel or advisor."
Wonderful.
So, and in fact, Madam Chair, I think you may have pointed this out.
Oh, maybe.
In any event, it was a good idea, whosoever idea it was. And so we added that language. We didn't think there would be any possible objection or controversy about that. So these are the proposed amendments. We, as I said, discussed them at the last meeting, and it's now before you as an action item. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
So if the college provides advice to a student, and that leads to the appointment of counsel, a student is still liable to pay for it?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have funding for this. And so we're not in a position to provide free legal counsel. And it is true, I think, at this point, in close to half the cases, that students do appear either with an advisor or counsel. And students who want an advisor or counsel, I don't think there's been a great deal of difficulty, particularly in advisor/counsel, it's a different matter because you usually have to pay. But we, so I'm not sure this has been a problem, but just in case a student needs some assistance, obviously, we ought to provide it in helping them find somebody.
Who from the college would typically serve as an advisor to a student? Would it be the, someone in the Student Affairs Office?
Often, they bring a friend or family member, or sometimes it's a fellow student. It's not one of our employees, because that would present a possible conflict of interest.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Professor.
The, and it wasn't immediately obvious that this was a change. The original documents in F2 said that a student could remain silent without, I think there's some verbiage here.
Without assumption of guilt.
Guilt. And that's been removed. Could we discuss that?
Sure.
Surprise.
Now, that was, that same change was before the committee, the last meeting. That's, that's not a new change. That has been, and, and the reason for that, there are several reasons. The, the law, the provision that is being deleted is a misstatement of law. That is to say, in a noncriminal proceeding, obviously, one has the right to remain silent in any proceeding pursuant to the Fifth Amendment right against self-incrimination.
That's why I'm asking.
However, the right not to have any adverse inference drawn from silence exists only in a criminal proceeding, not in a, in a noncriminal proceeding. These disciplinary proceedings are noncriminal proceedings. And so it is normal, in any noncriminal proceeding, that if, and this happens very rarely, by the way, it's happened once in the 14 years that I've been at CUNY. But if it occurs in a disciplinary proceeding that a student wishes to assert his right to remain silent, the law is that an adverse inference can be drawn from that.
Doesn't necessarily have to be.
Doesn't have to be. It's up to the fact finder.
Up to the all the circumstances.
Right, to give it whatever weight the fact finder wishes. But the statement that existed as to that right previously was simply an incorrect statement of the law. That's number one. Number two, the reason for deleting it is that, in fact, nobody else has that right. That is to say, the law is that in a noncriminal proceeding, if you refuse to testify, an adverse inference may be drawn. And so, for example, in faculty disciplinary proceedings, in those rare cases, and it has happened once or twice during my tenure, where a faculty member, where there was a parallel criminal investigation, and the faculty member was advised, well-advised, actually, not to testify, we did ask the fact finder to draw an adverse inference. There was no such provision or right, if you will, in the collective bargaining agreement or any other document relating to faculty members. And then the third reason for its removal really relates to the recent experience we had, which was the first time in 14 years where this actually arose in a disciplinary proceeding. And this was the tragic hazing incident involving Baruch College students in, in a retreat in Pennsylvania where a student died as a result of the hazing. And in that case, there obviously was a serious violation of the anti-hazing policy of Baruch College. It had tragic consequences. The college quite rightly felt that it had to go forward with disciplinary proceedings. It could not await the outcome of the criminal investigation and trial, which was predictably going to be the case, that it was going to last two or three years. And we're now at the, roughly, the one-year anniversary, and the trial is nowhere in sight. And it was very, very difficult, in those cases, to present cases to the disciplinary panels, because, as is always the case, the prosecutors don't want to share information. And we were, I would say, in a sense, fortunate or lucky that there were a few students who did testify. And if that hadn't have happened, we might very well have found ourselves in a position where we could have taken no disciplinary action despite the very, very serious nature of the offense. So it was really that experience that led me and others within my office to feel that we needed to, to modify this provision, to bring it into conformity with what the law is regarding the right not to incriminate yourself.
But, of course, student testimony then could lead to real criminal. If students are, do testify, are not given the right to remain silent without adverse inference, that what they do say then could be later used in a criminal court.
That is true. And that's why we provide in F3 that the notice shall contain a warning that anything the student says may be used against her or him at a non-college hearing. And I can certainly assure you that not only will the notice contain that pursuant to this provision, but my office, in dealing with these situations, and the colleges in dealing with these situations, if they know that there is a potential for a criminal case, they will advise the student that he really ought to be, he ought to be, he ought to have counsel.
Got a question for clarification. So removing the right to remain silent without assumption of guilt is not required by Title IX, is that correct?
That's correct. That the origins of this came from a different experience.
So, I mean, I asked the Chair about a motion to approve all the amendments about the one provision, and we spoke separately on that provision?
In other words, taking it apart?
As a piecemeal, yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I think normally, as a matter of Roberts' Rules of Order, what you would do is to amend these, this resolution, to put that back in and see if the committee wants to do that. And then if it does, you know, we would vote on the whole document.
That's the thing, for us, is that, as, you know, students, we don't want to impede in regards to the university being compliant with Title IX. We agree with Title IX. We want the university to move forward and make sure that we're complying with Title IX. And because this line does not impede in that progress, we hope that we can vote on all Title IX amendments and then vote on this one line separately from the bylaws. That way, we get one.
You would move that it be deleted, and that we would take that up before we take up the larger question?
No, that we take the larger question first, which is all the amendments to Title IX, and then vote separately on the line for right to remain silent.
You could do it in either order.
Either order.
To approve this, subject to a possible amendment after the approval.
Just a point of clarification, Counsel and Ms. Amonte. We're talking about the disciplinary code for CUNY, separate and apart from the sexual harassment. This is, this is just the disciplinary.
Right, we're just talking about the amendments.
So we're talking about Article 15 and Article IX per se.
That's correct.
Right, so just, just for clarification. So this is the, sort of, the entire body. So this would apply to boys, girls, men, women, in terms of the piece. And it's correcting an error that never should have been there to begin with, right? So it was an overstatement.
That, that's right. And I would, you know, recommend against what, what Lucas is suggesting, having nothing to do with, with Title IX, but because the, the existing language is a, is a misstatement of the law. It provides a right to students, a so-called right to students that faculty and staff don't have, and that in the rare instances where it arises, it could well impede an appropriate and necessary disciplinary proceeding. So for those reasons, I would argue against it. But procedurally, we can go either way. We can vote on this and then subject it to an amendment, or we could do the amendment first and then vote on the whole policy. I don't think it matters. So it's really up to you, Madam Chair, as to what order you want to take it in.
I'm, I'm comfortable looking at it in terms of the policy with the exception of the sentence in question, and then we can have a separate conversation on that. So may I have a motion to approve the parts of the policy that were stated with the exception of the, the one sentence that were raised? Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion is approved. And so the, the second part is the question on the table regarding the one sentence that has been deleted and changed. And from what I understand from Counsel's representation, that those were really a technical correction more than anything else, if I understand correctly, to leave the language in, it looks like would be giving almost a false, in other words, it would be legally void. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know that it was legally void. I mean, I think it was there, and it's within the power of a charter to provide rights that are not constitutionally required. But it's my view that, that it was ill-advised, that it was done, I think, on mistaken assumption as to the meaning of the Fifth Amendment, and that it is bad policy.
Well, Lucas, you should move to strike it, then.
Well, he, he really is moving to put it back in.
Put it back in. Put it back in the original language.
He wants to move to put the language back in.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, our rationale is basically that the laws are a floor, not a ceiling, for student rights. So the university could grant us all the due process rights that the courts do not offer us in regards to, the university does not allow us to exchange evidence prior to a hearing, there's only to cross-examine witnesses. I think that keeping this one line intact while our students do process protection allows the university to sort the truth in a much more fair, balanced process.
Well, I'm, I want to speak on the, on the other side. I'm in favor of deleting the provision. It is not required by law. That doesn't mean we don't have discretion to add it if we wish. I would argue against having it, however, because I think the fact finders should have the widest latitude to take all the circumstances into account in determining what happened. And, and while a student's silence doesn't necessitate a conclusion, it should be one of the things that a fact finder could weigh. In most cases, it would not be, but I can, I can imagine circumstances where a party's silence would be one factor that a fact finder would want away in, in coming to the best judgment about, about what happened. So I'm in favor of, of deleting it, both because it's not required, but also because it interferes with the discretion of fact finders to take all circumstances that are relevant into account in reaching conclusions. And I also think it's right that, that we should have a single standard for faculty and students in our disciplinary proceedings. Faculty don't have this, any provision of this kind protecting them. I don't think they should, but I don't think students should be treated differently.
Any other comments, Professor?
There is a technical issue here. When, when the agenda came out, I, the agenda shows two versions of this policy, one marked up and the other's not marked up on the, on the line. I, I discussed this policy with my students. I teach a course at the moment, and, and so I provided them with a markup. And then at, only this afternoon did I realize that the markup copy that's online does not include these changes. In other words, it's, it's marked up as if these changes were already approved by the committee, which they were not, yet, because they were, they were not voted on last time.
That's correct.
So, so there is no one, unless we, unless, unless the one we were just given today, there is no one, I received no one copy of the markup that had all changes from between the original board copy and everything that's being voted on. That didn't even exist as far, it certainly wasn't given to me. So that's, I think, not a good procedure. We should, in one document, in a single document, have markups that illustrate all changes that go from the original to the new version. And we never really got that. And I, and one of those was an act issue, was in fact, this section that we're talking about. And so my students didn't, they didn't see anything, any, any problem here, because there was nothing there. The, the markups that were in today's agenda were trivialities. They were slight changes in text. In fact, I was confused about this myself, although I was here last time, and I should not have been.
Let me address that. This was just an administrative error.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, there was a complete markup.
I know that, yeah, I see that.
And everybody saw it. And then when the agenda and materials got assembled for today's meeting, and I just realized, learned this about an hour ago, incorrect, the markup that you see, it doesn't even represent the markup with the change that I, that one change that I mentioned. It, it came from an internal document. It was just a mistake. Somebody attached the wrong document. So at the prior meeting, everybody saw the complete markup. The student representatives and student government and my office have been discussing this change with real focus on this one provision for many, many months. This, this is not a surprise, and nobody's been blindsided here. I do apologize, and somehow, between my office and Frank's office, we, we messed up, and the, the so-called redlined version is not the correct line, redlined version. But the one that was before the committee at the last meeting was the correct redlined version. It showed all of the changes. And, and as I said, the students and I have been discussing this specific provision for many, many months.
And the document just handed out is the redline with all the changes.
The document just handed out is the same redline that was appeared, that appeared before the committee last time.
So, so the one that was on today's agenda didn't have additional changes? These were?
They're, they're changes that were actually made before, before the draft, before the September meeting. It was just an old document that was redlined, and it got attached by mistake.
I see.
Well, I got a call from Rick to discuss this matter last week. Did you call other members of the committee?
I spoke to the Chair. I think you were the only two that I, that I called at that time. Of course, I've discussed it with the student government representatives for, for quite some time now. But anyway, I apologize for that.
Well, the, the point is that I, I like to get the input of my own students on these issues.
Sorry.
And so I was not able to get that input. And because they came back to me and said, "Not, not in here," and then only, only this afternoon did I realize why they came back, saying, "Nothing here." So, there it is.
Anyway, I guess, Lucas, did you want to make a motion to put that language back in?
Yeah, I want to motion to keep the right to remain silent without assumption of guilt in the bylaws as currently stated in the bylaws.
Second?
Can you repeat that, please?
I'd like to motion to preserve the right to remain silent without assumption of guilt in Article 15, Section 4 to, currently 4 as well.
Is there a second to that motion?
I just have a procedural question. If we voted on all the changes except for this one, then this motion has no consequence because the language is still the original language. Is that not true?
No, I think we said we were going to vote on it with the exception, and then have a.
With the exception, with the exception, so that means that with that, given that exception, the language we have now at this point in time is the original language.
Now, the line was just voted on includes all of the changes. Look, as a matter of Roberts' Rules of Order, we should have done the amendment first and then voted on the whole document.
Yes, right.
We chose to do it the other way.
That's what, that's.
We chose to do it the other way around.
Very confusing, yeah.
But I, I think it's now clear what we're talking about. The committee has approved the amendments, subject to the ability of the students to make this one additional amendment. The amendment has now been proposed, and the question is, is there a second?
I'll second it as a matter of.
Any discussion or questions?
I just repeat what I said before. I think this is not the way civil cases generally proceed. I think students ought to be treated the same way that faculty ought to be treated as a matter of fairness. And I think fact finders in these proceedings need to be able to take all the circumstances that they deem relevant into account, including a student's, including a student's silence, as they can if, in a faculty, with a faculty member's silence in a disciplinary proceeding. So I'm opposed to including this as a matter of fairness and as a matter of, of giving our fact finders maximum latitude to take all circumstances into account.
I'm intending to abstain, and if we vote on this next time, I'll, I'll vote. But right now, I'd like to, I do prefer to consult with my own students on this.
But this, this, this is it. It's going to the board in the summer.
Fine, that's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
Any other, any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to disagree. I think that the civil courts operate by different standards of standard proof in regards to prompt the evidence and also clear and convincing standard. We operate under one standard, prompt of the evidence. This low minimum standard might create the risk of evoriously depriving students of their rights in regards to, removing the line will allow the committee to use that assumption of guilt to satisfy the standard of proof, which is, again, minimal. We're not providing enough due process to students who are both accused, and I think it's an investment to the university to move forward and allow this line to be included in the bylaws for both the sake of the student due process and also the integrity of our disciplinary proceedings.
Any other comments?
So if we want the, the statement not to be included, we would vote no on this motion?
Yes.
That's correct, because he's moving to add it to a document that does not now have it. So you would vote no if you wanted to agree with me and Rick?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
I concur with Chairman Schmidt's analysis and also support deleting the provision as we have discussed, for the reasons that have already been put on the table. No more discussion? All in favor?
In favor of Lucas's proposal.
Opposed? The motion does not carry.
Now, if I might, phrase, is one other error in the agenda, which is that the, there is a second, rather, a third action item, which is the, the policy on sex-based harassment and sexual violence, which you have in your materials, it just got, it just got omitted under action items.
Yes.
So this is, of course, part of the same process that we've been discussing about bringing our policies in line with Title IX of the Civil Rights Act and various amendments and regulations of the federal government. What we have done here are several things. First, under our prior policies, trustee, I mean, committee member, Phillips, it's this not.
I see, this one here, yes.
Yeah, yeah, the long one, the one with the table of contents. So we've done a few things to amend and improve this policy. First, we brought together in one place policies that had been in different places before. Under our old policies, the provisions relating to sexual harassment were in the anti-discrimination policy of the university, and then there was a separate policy on sexual assault. It was recommended some time ago by a number of people around the university that we ought to bring those together and be part of the same policy. Secondly, the policy's been strengthened in a number of ways and brought into conformity with federal law, including stronger provisions about education and training, about support services, about confidentiality, and, and how we go about handling these, these serious complaints. And then, finally, it was brought into accord with federal policy and law to have a clear definition of consent, which had not been a part of our policies before. The federal government did not dictate a particular definition of consent. They just said you have to have a clear definition of consent. We have followed the lead of, of the governor and, well, let me put it this way. We had decided to go in a certain direction, and it happened to be consistent with what the governor proposed to CUNY and that CUNY passed recently, SUNY passed recently in a, one of its board meetings. And that is to have a definition of consent that is often referred to as affirmative consent. And so those are the, the major changes. consent. And so those are the, the major changes. I, I would add a couple of things. We have been in close communication with the governor's office and with SUNY because there's a desire by all of us to be on the same page in, in this policy. The policy is drafted, is quite consistent with the resolution that SUNY passed at the, and, 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 at the urging of the governor. But we continue to have conversations, and so it may be that there is going to be between now and the board meeting some additional tweaking of language. I think the basic concepts are sound and are there, and I commend them to you for your approval. But I did want you to know that there are these continuing conversations, and so there, there may be some language changes, and I promise you they will be well redlined before the board meeting. One change that I'm actually interested in, and I would tell you right now, is I think the name of the policy is a mouthful, and it would be much better if we just shortened it to the policy on sexual misconduct. And I hope when we, since I know we're going to do a few changes between now and the board meeting, that's, that's one of them that I can predict you will see. But there may be some others. But anyway, this is the, this is the policy. It, I think in every way is in accord with Title IX. It, it, it puts us in a consistent path with, with SUNY. And most importantly, I think it provides better protection, a better training, and a better, and a clearer view of how to handle these cases going forward, which fortunately we have not had as many of as other universities. I think, not because we're more virtuous, but largely because we're more non-residential. But, but, but although quantitatively we've done better, qualitatively, these still remain, of course, very important matters and, and serious matters for our consideration. And so this is, this is what I...
Rick, how many cases typically arise where this consent issue would be, would be an issue? Do we get two or three a year, or...
I think it's less than that. I think it's less than that. If, if you put to one side claims of sexual harassment and are just looking at, at sexual assault, sexual violence, which is where the issue of consent really comes up. First of all, over the entire university, I don't think we have more than a handful of such cases in a year, probably on the fingers of one hand, but maybe two. And in terms of where the consent issue has come up, you know, my memory is fallible, and I don't have hard data, but my guess is I can think of one or two where this has been, you know, the issue of how you define consent is really been at, at the forefront. We've been extremely lucky in that regard. And, but I think we can assume that it will continue to come up, but not on a very common basis.
Since the governor was so interested in this, and it's not really a problem in CUNY, does that suggest that there's a huge problem like this in SUNY? I, I'm just asking.
Well, there was, the, the clearing numbers, so you know that all of these things are portable under the Clearing Act, and SUNY reported its clearing numbers this fall, and there was a press report on those numbers. And I think a number of people responded that they seemed, they seemed high. I have no way of knowing whether they were higher than in past years or lower. Actually, the reality of this is that the better your policy, the higher your numbers, at least temporarily, are going to be, because people will be encouraged to go forward. It's not that the incidence has gone up, but the reporting has gone up, and that's a good thing. So, no, I, I think, I don't think SUNY is, is any, any worse than any other large university system. And in fact, SUNY had reached a consent decree with the Office of Civil Rights almost two years ago in this area. So I think, like us, they were very much on the right track. And, but there were, I think those numbers were out there this past fall.
Are the private colleges and universities under similar pressure from the governor to, to adopt affirmative consent?
I, I can't answer that question. What I can say is that I have, I, I believe that once SUNY and CUNY have adopted their policies, that there may be some interest by the governor and the legislature in legislation that would cover the private colleges and universities.
If I'm not mistaken, Columbia has either adopted an affirmative consent provision or is, has it under consideration?
I think that, I think that's correct.
I mean, there's no real reason that the governor would, would focus on just CUNY and SUNY. I mean, this is an issue. Sexual assault is an issue in private colleges as well as, as, as public ones.
Sure.
So...
They have dormitories.
They have dormitories. That's right.
And Columbia has been seeing a lot of sort of controversial cases and threats.
Yep.
And most universities that find themselves in that situation have been looking at their policies, and most of them are awful, and this one is excellent.
Right. And, you know, we hold ourselves out, and in fact, we are a non-residential university, and the number of residents is, is very small compared to our total, 274,000 students, approximately 3,000 in residence. It's a tiny percentage of what we are. But when you think about it, 3,000 residential students is the size of Williams. I mean, it's a college. So, so we have to be, you know, we have to be as diligent on this issue as, as everybody else.
Yeah, Vice Chancellor, this is, your, your report is for overview purposes, and...
No, no, this, this was intended to be, so this is not a bylaw amendment, so it doesn't require coming before the committee twice. This is a, a new policy for the board, which we, and, and I'm asking you to, to, to approve this policy so that we can bring it to the full board on December first. It is also being presented today as an information item at the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration, because obviously this policy impacts both students and faculty and staff. And because we were also doing the amendments to Article fifteen, and because the definition of consent has really come up mostly in the context of student affairs, or student, in the context of student conduct, we thought it made sense to present both of them to this committee as action items.
I'll move it.
Second? Any discussion or questions?
Just procedurally, I mean, I looked at the agenda and the materials, and I didn't see it. Did I make a mistake?
It's in the materials. It is not on the agenda. I saw an earlier version of the, of this and thought I'd corrected it to edit, and it didn't wind up on the final agenda.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion is approved. Thank you. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now address the committee.
Yes, I'm a bit relatively short of report, but I do want to take this moment to recognize our, our new USS Chair and Student Trustee, Joseph Awaji. Just for a little bit of background, Joseph Awaji is currently pursuing a master's degree at Brooklyn College specializing in natural and behavioral sciences. And in just this past October, was elected to be the twenty-ninth chairperson of the University Student Senate for this academic year. He's born and raised in Ghana. Mr. Awaji received his bachelor's of science in exercise science from Brooklyn College in 2007. And as an undergraduate, Mr. Awaji was engaged in his role as a senator at the Brooklyn College Student Government, the Forensics Debate Team, and the Academic Club Association, as well serving as captain of the men's soccer team. During his tenure at the USS, as the USS Vice Chair for Fiscal Affairs under trustee Mohamed Arshad, Mr. Awaji was an integral part of the grassroots campaign that restored a merit-based scholarship within the New York City Council budget. With strong support from the City Council Committee on Higher Education, $11.1 million was included in the fiscal year 2015 budget for a merit-based scholarship for CUNY students, and over 13,000 students will benefit from this scholarship. This is just one example of Mr. Awaji's vision for USS. His vision is to mobilize students around key issues that affect CUNY students and continue to organize so that students can maximize their political and professional potential. And so please help me welcome Joseph as our new student trustee. We also, Lucas Amonte is also our new student representative. He's a senior at New York City College Technology and in Law and Paralegal Studies and plans to graduate in June 2015. And we already saw a great display of his work and interests in legal affairs, and so I'd like to also welcome Lucas. A couple of items to share with the committee. USS also held, held their annual awards recognition dinner October 22nd, just this past month, where they recognized a number of administrators and students who've done, particularly students who've done outstanding work this past year. On the athletic front, we had the Staten Island won the women's tennis championship, and they're now headed to the NCAA championships. Women's volleyball championships will be this coming Friday at Baruch College, and men's and women's soccer will be this Saturday. The championships will be this Saturday at Brooklyn College. This Friday, November 7th, we'll be hosting our second annual Veterans Academic Recognition Breakfast. This was an opportunity not just to recognize our top performing, academically performing veteran students, but over the last couple of years, we've received quite a bit of interest from private industry and companies, and we've invited a number of companies to join us in this celebration, and more importantly, get to know our students. NBC Universal, CBS, the Municipal Credit Union, among many others, will be in attendance at this event. We also are, this year, launched an expansion of our food bank opportunities for, for students. In fact, there was a recent article in the Wall Street Journal that highlighted some of this expansion work. And our goal over the next couple of years is to double, if not triple, the pounds of food and the number of meals for our students and their families. In a similar fashion, we've also are looking at expanding support services and a network of, of programs and support for our students in foster care. We have about 1,000 students that are orphans and wards of the court across CUNY. And together with Lawyers for Children, the Children's AIDS Society, the Administration for Children's Services, and many other non-for-profits, we're looking at expanding our support network for virtually every student who's in foster care who enters into CUNY. We want to make sure to ensure that they have the best chances of success. National studies show that students in foster care have among the lowest graduation rates. In fact, national studies have that graduation rate range between 3% and 11% graduation rate of those that actually go to college. We think we can do a lot better than that. And so we're looking to expand better support for our students in foster care. And then finally, we had a very successful ninth annual blackmail initiative conference. We had record attendance, nearly 1,300 participants this year. And the chancellor, Chancellor Milliken, gave some remarks, as well as the Honorable Inez Barron, the Chair of the High Education Committee for the city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor. Any questions or comments?
I have one question about that just wonderful work that you just finished describing regarding CUNY's work with the foster care system and, and aligning those young people with college opportunities. Is the city providing any formal financial assistance or, or support in that regard?
So, ye, yes. This past week, Senior Vice Chancellor Hershenson convened a meeting with Administration for Children's Services, Commissioner Carrion, and several others to talk about how the city can engage in this initiative. I, that very, on that day, I was actually in Aspen, at the Aspen Institute, interacting with a variety of philanthropists also focused on foster care. There's a, a forum on community innovations that the White House put together. And so I think there's not only city funds that are available, but potentially a number of private foundations that are interested in this work.
That's wonderful to hear. Any other comments or comments? May I have?
I'd just like to note that the CUNY Academy is holding a reception on December 4th for Fulbright students who are at the university, and everyone here will receive an invitation for that reception.
What date was that?
December 4th, a reception for Fulbright and other international program students in the university.
Excuse me, I believe December, oh, no, December 3rd, sorry, Student Trustee Dinner. I apologize. Where will this be held?
At the Gradus Center in the Skylive Room, 7:00.
Anything, any other updates? May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great evening, and thank you very much for the wonderful work done today.